Welcome. My name is Aya Desimone. I'm a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters of Greenwich. And we are very happy to have you join us today. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Greenwich, along with our partners, the Greenwich P-Tech and Greenwich Alliance for Education, we're pleased to present the 2021 Candidate Debate for the upcoming Board of Education election. Local municipal elections will be held on Tuesday, November 2nd this year. I'm going to take a couple of minutes to explain how today's debate will work, and then I'll hand over to our moderators to introduce the candidates and begin the debate. So please bear with me, I won't be long. This is a webinar. The audience will be in view-only mode. Only the candidates and the moderators will have access and be visible on your screen. We will not be using the chat or the Q&amp;A functionality for questions today. The public were invited to submit their questions in advance for simplicity and efficiency. We received many, many, many questions, and we'll do our best to get through as many of them as possible. This debate is being recorded, as you may have heard. The recordings will be available on our website, lvwgreenwich.org, and on our YouTube channel tomorrow afternoon. As a reminder, please note that recordings of this event, whether in person or in or from a computer screen, may not be used without the express approval of the League, except by the media who have registered and are reporting on the event. Before we begin the debate, I'd like to give a brief summary of the role of the BOE to help inform your analysis. The Board of Education, otherwise known as the BOE, is composed of eight members who serve four-year staggered terms. This year, Democrats have nominated two candidates, and Republicans have nominated three. Only two from each party will be elected. There are no unaffiliated candidates on the ballot this year. Members of the BOE elect the chairman. That chairperson does not have a tie-breaking vote. If the Board... The Board cannot agree on the election of its chairman, that person will be selected by the first selection of Greenwich. Because every BOE decision requires five votes, collegiality among board members of different political points of view is an important feature of an effective Board of Ed. As in most democratic institutions, good governance demands that all eight members of the Board of Ed, even if they may have disagreed at the time of the vote, ultimately respect and support decisions reached by the majority. The Board of Ed is responsible for the town's public schools and has other duties. Most importantly, it's at policy. It hires and evaluates the superintendent. It approves the annual operating and capital budgets, and approves curriculum objectives. All very important functions. So thank you for your patience, and with that, let's get this debate started. I'd like to hand over to the President of P-Tech, Mimi Duff. Mimi, over to you.
Thank you, Aya. Good evening. I am Mimi Duff, the P-Tech President, PTA Council. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to thank the folks from the League of Women Voters Greenwich and the Greenwich Alliance for helping us put this event together. And of course, Carol Reimers for moderating the forum. Carol has graciously agreed to moderate our debate this evening. She's a former president of the League of Women Voters Connecticut and is a resident of Killingsworth. Now I'll turn it over to you, Carol.
Thank you very much, Mimi. This evening's candidate's debate will use the following format. The candidates will be timed on their responses by party and can take the amount of time that they deem appropriate to respond to the questions. Candidates are encouraged to rebut so that they are responding to their differences as they perceive them. In this format, candidates have the opportunity to hold each other to account. As the moderator, I will pose questions. Candidates will take turns being first to respond to the question. The cosponsors, represented by all the political parties, submitted, reviewed, and prioritized all the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. The order of precedence was determined by lot prior to the debate, and the Democratic Party will go first for questions and closing statements. Individual candidates will have an opportunity to be asked a question first, and this will be alphabetical. The candidate's closing statement will be in reverse out of alphabetical order. The candidates this year for your Greenwich Board of Education are Republicans: Megan Galetta, Cody Kittle, Michael Joseph Mercante Anthony, and Democrats Laura Costin and Kathleen Stowe. We are starting this debate. Thank you, candidates, for your patience. And now we will go into the discussion section of our debate this evening. And as I noted before, the Democratic Party drew first, and since we're going alphabetically, Mrs. Laura Costin will be responding first. So this question for you is, what is your top priority as a school board member?
I think I have more than one. I believe that we need to improve our special education system as well as our ADA status. We're not terribly compliant. And I'd like to see more communication between members of the Board and our school community. Those would be my top three.
Okay, Ms. Galetta. Well, same question. What is your top priority as a school board member?
My top priority would be addressing our declining district scores. Student scores. Addressing student achievement. In addition, addressing our ADA compliance, handicapped accessibility absolutely, and our unsafe school environments, including air quality.
Thank you. And Kathleen Stowe, same question.
Yes, so I'm running for much of the same reason I did back in 2017. The last four years have shown me how we can really make an impact from the board level. I've always believed that public schools are the foundation of the community, and now, more than ever, I see that impact. I want to continue to focus on delivering a best-in-class education system while recognizing we need to balance that with the financial priorities of our district. I think my extensive career in finance has helped us a lot over the past four years, and I hope it'll continue to help us. And in the next term, what I really want to focus on is improving our infrastructure and continuing to focus on the achievement for all of our students.
Okay, Mr. Cody Kittle, you're next.
I think Kathleen put that really nicely. I think the priority overall is student outcomes. I think, you know, in the near term on the Board, I think solving some of the dysfunction that I think has plagued it to the detriment of students is really important. The term collegiality was used earlier, and I think that there's a lot... Everyone stands to benefit from a refreshed Board that is able to work not only across the aisle within the Board of Education, but also with the BET and the other groups and governing groups in Greenwich.
Okay. Dr. Mercante Anthony, you're next.
Yeah, let me echo a couple of the themes there. So thanks, and thanks for your time. So there are four real big issues that I see it that I... You know, one obviously is the perennial special education crisis in town. Another is really a sense of fiscal responsibility. The structure and leadership of the Board, how the Board is organized and its relationships with other Boards in town, like Cody said, is a significant concern. And then, but then fundamentally, student achievement and making sure the Board is focused on instructional leadership, particularly instructional leadership that's grounded in educational research and the science of learning. I have 23 years of experience in public education. Education is my career. I was on the Board of Education previously in my hometown, and it concerns me that many of the issues that we're talking about are not front and center in how the Board is structured.
Our next question.
Do we... Sorry, can we add just one?
Sure, if you would like to ask anything, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, perhaps because I'm the incumbent, I'm going to add some things at times. And one of the things I wanted to just note is that from a financial standpoint, we have found a lot of efficiencies actually over the past four years. One of the statistics I found today is that our... I like to call it our SG&A, but our administrative costs used to be 4% of our budget when I started on the Board, and it's now down to 2.6%, and hopefully I'll go into more detail on that later. But also, a lot of people talk about the dysfunction on the Board, but I have to say personally, I haven't felt it. The majority of us really get along very well. And, I mean, I write all my letters with the Republican Peter Bernstein, and Joe Kelly and I were talking just the other day because I needed to go in and sort of... Actually, he's been doing everything on Cardinal Stadium. I cannot take that away from him at all. But there was one meeting he asked me to go in because he had something else, and I said, "Absolutely." So we actually work really well as a Board, and I just feel like I need to put that out there. But thank you.
Okay, and anyone else like to add anything?
Just one thing. During the speed round, you asked a question about the funding for our schools. And in the past year, we've done okay with our operating, but really, it's our capital budgeting that, you know, I feel that that question with the speed round needed some qualification.
Then we'll go on to the next question. The new Board of Education will be developing a new or revised strategic plan. The current plan's focus on personalized learning opportunities for each student by providing customized learning paths seems to have faded from view. What will be the focus of your plan, and will personalized learning be part of that plan? And Ms. Galetta, you're first with this question.
So the question... Can you repeat the question?
Sure.
Please, thank you. It sounds like there's some feedback coming through.
Yeah, we'll be developing a new or revised strategic plan. And the current plan's focus, personalized learning opportunities for each student, has faded from... Seems to have faded from view. What will be the focus of your plan, and will personalized learning be part of that plan?
I think what we really need to make sure... Again, it sounds like there's some feedback coming through. Can you all hear that?
Yeah, we can. I cannot hear it, but if you're okay with continuing, that would be fine.
Sure. I feel like we really need to focus on a few different... There's several areas that we need to make sure that we're focusing on for our children and for the success of our students in our district. One key area is with special education. As we know that, you know, we've... There's been a special education... We created a special education report. And as I speak to so many families in town that have been grappling with this, I'm not sure if you're all aware and the attendees have been aware, but I am in the district for just about 20 years in the Greenwich Schools District. I've raised four children through the Greenwich Public Schools, North Myanis Eastern Middle School and Greenwich High School. So I have children that range in the ages of 24 down to age 15, with my last two at Greenwich High School right now. So I've definitely seen an evolution in Greenwich Schools. I definitely can speak on behalf of various superintendents and leadership and boards that our community has had. And I have to say that, you know, we've always, for decades, our school has been known as a strong, high-achieving district according to the needs of an extremely diverse community. Over the last four years, however, we've seen a huge decline. Our academic achievement is down. Student enrollment is declining. Curriculum and teaching have become politicized. And the Board of Ed, unfortunately, has become confrontational with the Greenwich community and the town government. So I believe personally, as someone who's a businesswoman and a person that leads partnerships and business partnerships and strategic alliances for an organization, that I feel that we really need to focus on fostering collaboration within the Board and then as well within the town government. Some of the key areas that I see are critically important for us to focus on would be improving student achievement and the district scores. And this is across the Board at all learning levels. We're not just talking about the high achievers. Obviously, we've got a very diverse students in our district. We need to remedy special education and the ADA inefficiencies. We need to foster freedom of thought in classrooms, and we need to ensure curriculum transparency. As far as personalized learning, I think that's something that we can all assess together as a Board collectively and determine if that is something that we will tend to focus on. But I think the results of, you know, looking at a strategic plan overall is what's necessary and what we feel, setting the goals and objectives, and how best to achieve those collectively, which may or may not include personalized learning plans. I think it's to be determined.
Ms. Costin, would you like to speak on this as well?
Yes, I mean, I do think personalized learning is important for our students, particularly ones in special education, but as a district as a whole. I think that students should be offered opportunities to learn that meet their individual needs and meet them where they are. I really believe social-emotional learning is a valuable tool for that. I believe, you know, starting children early with learning how to focus and maintain their attention for long periods of time. That's where we begin in kindergarten with social-emotional learning. And later on, you know, managing anxiety and conflict resolution, things adults have trouble with. I think all of these are important tools for our students that will help them achieve their best outcomes. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Cody Kittle, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, no, I think you said it nicely, laying out what's important priorities. I think just on the personalized education front, my understanding of the research on that is that it is not particularly effective. So I think it's probably not a bad thing that the Board has drifted away from it. I think Mike actually is probably the person who can weigh in best on this. So maybe I'll save some of our team's time for him to comment.
Okay, well, we'll go over to Mrs. Stowe. Would you like to speak on this?
Sure, just real fast. I think Laura said it well, but personalized learning was a part of our prior strategic plan. I know that the Strategic Planning Committee has been doing something for a bit. Nothing has come to fruition quite yet, so it will be definitely the work of the next Board. I think actually they're calling it now "making learning personal." It used to be called differentiated instruction. I see it with my three children. I actually do think it's something that's valuable, but I'd like to hear from sort of the experts on that and what's current. But I have seen how it's benefited my children. And, you know, we talk about the different programs, and actually on Thursday night, we're going to be spending, really digging into the Advanced Learning Program. We're obviously been spending a lot of time digging into the Special Education Program, but then, of course, there's sort of like 80% in the middle. And we need to make sure that we are... That's in elementary, right? Obviously, it changes once you get to middle school and high school. But we need to make sure that all of their needs are being met along the way. And I think that's the only way you might be able to do that is probably through personalized learning.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I think that this is an example of why... The premise of your question actually speaks to why a lot of folks in town talk about, you know, the word dysfunction to town. I mean, Kathleen, I appreciate what you said, and I think it's great that you work closely with Peter Bernstein and talk with other people on the Board. We know that there were Board members that refused to talk to each other. Regardless, on the strategic plan, there was an update at the September meeting with some student achievement data based on strategic plan presented at the Board meeting. And then a week later, the administration said, "Actually, that data is not totally accurate." That's an example of kind of the systemic dysfunction that we're talking about. We should all know what the strategic plan is. We should have Board goals that are targeted, measurable, time-bound, that are tied to that. The superintendent's goals that were approved in June are not measurable. They're not tied to quantitative student achievement. And there are 11 priorities listed there. I think that's where we can strengthen, which is one of my points, where we can strengthen how the Board supports the vision of the district. No question, we need to have a strategic plan tied towards supporting all students as quality learners. The student achievement data that we're going to see, that the Board's going to look at on Thursday, which is available online now, shows some real stark challenges here. You know, fifth grade, sixth grade math ELA dropped 10 points. COVID, no question, has really impeded many students' learning. Any strategic plan, any talk about supporting all students really needs to be rooted in what are we going to do to support these students to make sure that their learning is accelerated in the near term? And then move forward from there. Our test scores were actually declining in several areas before COVID. And now it's... The numbers that on the Board website are stark, particularly when you look at the socioeconomic achievement gap. So I really think that's where we're about to... We have to look at that.
Anyone else like to add to this conversation on this question? Yes, Ms. Galetta.
Yes, I would agree with Mike in that we should all know the Board's goals and objectives and the superintendent's goals, and I would agree that it's unclear at this point. So I think that, you know, after the series of meetings that were held over the summer and into the fall, I'm not really sure that the parents are feeling supported in that area as well. And I agree, they need to be documented and time-bound as well. I think that's the right approach. Secondly, it sounded like before you had mentioned you had asked the question about personalized learning, but then I heard Laura answer that with regards to SEL. So was the question more wanting to understand our thoughts around SEL, social-emotional learning? Or was it that social-emotional learning is a very important factor in personalized learning? So I just wanted to sort of understand your thoughts around there. I mean, my perspective is we are struggling, also as Mike had called out and I called out earlier. Our district scores are declining. We have been known as a community that has held ourselves in the very high standards across the state. And with that, what has that produced? High-achieving kids, kids that were really prepared for the next level, whatever that might be. So if they're in elementary school, we prepare them for middle, then we prepare them for high, and then beyond high school. If we focus more on SEL and we don't address the issues of declining scores and COVID-loss learning, how will we get these kids prepared? So my concern is, instead of taking the very time that we're taking out of the curriculum to have these SEL group, you know, meetings, I would say, or in the classroom, we're taking time devoted for that, we could be really focusing those efforts on what did we lose and how do we get the kids beyond where we were prior to COVID. For me, that I think is a primary concern, and speaking with so many parents as I've been out campaigning, that just seems to be the number-one concern.
I would just like to clarify my answer because it seems like it might be misunderstood by some of you. What I said was SEL is a component of personalized learning for each child. They have unique challenges. They have unique strengths. And it is just a tool in our toolbox and embedded in our curriculum and embedded in our learning and embedded in a school day. It is not one at the expense of another. That is, I just want to be very clear.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Galetta.
I do feel, however, that educators should primarily focus on educating. That's what they are professionals and proficient. And parents are proficient at teaching the values and social-emotional learning as we do with our children from birth. So those are the things that they're learning from their families and even extended families. It doesn't have to be a mom and a dad. It could be extended families. However, those are the very values that families teach and, you know, large, you know, extended families. Curriculum and teaching and learning are what our educators are. They're professionals and proficient, and that's where I think parents would like to see the emphasis be placed.
Yeah, can I add? Because I hear it make saying it's saying... I think it's... I think some of it is a false dichotomy. Look, no question, you know, families are the first teachers of their students. Nobody's saying that. Nobody's saying that, and we definitely need curriculum transparency around that. We also know that the emotional needs of students are real. You saw in the paper just on Sunday, the study in Greenwich, you know, more than half of teenagers reporting incidents of depression, loneliness, and depression and loneliness and anxiety. And we also see this... We also saw, you know, these are national trends, you know, even before the pandemic. You know, one in five teenage girls reported depressive episode nationwide within the last month. These are things that parents, particularly parents of middle schools and high school students, know. Nobody's saying we don't have to... We're not supposed to support academics and the primary missions of academics. But you don't just throw out those other supports. That would be incredibly dangerous for the vast majority of our students that need supports. SEL is a terrible name. It's one of those edu-babble names where nobody really knows what it is. 10 years ago, 10 years ago, we called SEL, we called it life skills. 20 years ago, we called it character education. What are we really talking about? What do we really want to make sure our kids know, learn? They need to learn skills around self-regulation. They need to learn skills about rational decision-making. They need to learn skills around organization, executive functioning. It's a little unserious to just say schools need to focus on the academics and not social-emotional needs. If we don't focus on those other life skill needs, we're not going to get... We're not going to move the needle on student achievement.
Okay, I'd like to point out that the Democratic Party is behind in time in this cumulative format. I don't know if you want to have any more to say on this question, or if you are ready to move on to the next one. Yeah, you want to move on? Okay. So the next question is, how should the Board of Education exercise its responsibility to approve curriculum? What should the Board control? What should the Board control, and what do the professionals control? And Ms. Stowe, you start first with this.
Sure. I'm going to sort of take this twofold, if you don't mind. So one of the primary goals that we actually just voted on for the superintendent goals is curriculum and transparency, right? And I think that we're hearing more and more, and we should, that we need to ensure that all of our teachers have ample resources and that they're easy to access. I think there was a time when we had a bunch of resources out there, but the teachers didn't quite know where to find it. It was all over the place. And so I think we need to make sure that our teachers have everything that they need. We call them our digital toolkit, lesson plans, all of that. And we need to make sure that the communication and that we're transparent with the parents. And I know that we're seeing more and more information going up on the website, and that's very important. I've also appreciated the recent newsletters that have been created that are going out to the district. If you guys aren't getting them, make sure you subscribe. There's one on special education. There was one that just launched on Out this week. And there's also one on All about Academics K through 8. The other thing that I wanted to note just... The other thing that I wanted to note, just in case it doesn't come up tonight, is that we heard, especially from P TAC, when representatives come from P TAC, and they've, you know, obviously go out and survey the various schools, is that there wasn't consistency in the curriculum. So if you are learning something in social studies at Central Middle School, you should be learning, of course, the same thing at Western Eastern, so that you're all prepared when you're having the curriculum delivered to you when you get to the high school. But now you ask us about our role. And so that's where I want to make sure that everyone understands that we're a policy and governance board and approving curriculum is part of that. But we also need to recognize that professional educators, people like Michael, know their stuff and they went to school for this. And so we have to make sure we don't get into the weeds, but that we approve the curriculum is 100% correct.
Carol, I think I think you're on.
Yeah, you're on you.
I apologize. Mr. Kittle, it's your time to respond.
Yeah, so the what Kathleen said about transparency, I think, is really important because I I think a lot of the controversy in town in the last, you know, year or two it has, and actually, I think it it's led to an improvement in in the state of our curriculum just by having people know what's being taught. And and it's one of the most effective ways to, you know, avoid any pitfalls and and what's getting out there. I think this really comes down to a question of governance. You you obviously can't have the Board of Education coming up with the entire curriculum and writing textbooks and, you know, being kind of their own custom Wikipedia for the town. What you need instead is a an effective framework to evaluate the materials that are available and to decide what fits with the state standards and what fits with the the like broader objectives. I think you have to be really careful to not overstep. But you you also, in order to protect the quality, you have to be very vigilant about making sure that the 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 stated goals are followed. I think where, you know, one of the issues is that if you have, or or it's kind of an important question is, what do you do when teachers go outside of what is what's supposed to be in the curriculum? And and how are you holding accountable the administrators that oversee this? Because a lot of problems can be fixed just by having a really sound accountability framework. I think most people, there's more agreement than I think the general perception is around what should be in the classroom. And so a lot of it is just ensuring that you don't have these, you know, certain teachers going rogue with with what's what's out there and 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 that there's accountability when they do.
Okay. Ms. Costin, do you have anything to add here?
Yes, and I would like to say that I'm I'm very happy with the information I get as a parent. I have a child in preschool, one in elementary and two in the high school. And I can tell you, they send a monthly newsletter, here's what we're doing in the month of October. And, you know, for my older ones, I I get a really comprehensive list of the things that they're learning. I'll tell you, you know, in honors algebra two, I I'm good, you know, I really, I'm going to trust the teachers on honors algebra two. You know, I I don't know why why this area has become so hot. You know, there have been some instances that are regrettable in the last year. And I don't think that those are related to curriculum items or or assignments that are mainstays of our schools. I think they might have been isolated incidents and very unfortunate. But right now, what has resulted is that we're getting regular updates all about curriculum. And and, you know, any question I've ever had, I get answered from my child's teacher. And I can go into Schoology, I can go into Ask them and see exactly what what I need to see. You know, I I understand what they're learning in in biology. And, you know, I'm, I think we're making great strides in making sure parents have the resources that they need. So if they have a question about what was on this test, it's easy to see now. That's the beauty of having all of these electronic tools at our disposal. So I'm very encouraged by what I see from from our administration, from our teachers. And and to me, we're we're really making improvements in a very short period of time.
Uh, thank you. We will, again, we we're still working on a discrepancy. So I just wanted to give the Republicans opportunity to respond.
I didn't respond yet.
Okay. Let's go ahead then. The next person by alphabet would be.
Yeah, I did not respond to that last question.
Right, right.
Okay. Can everyone see what I'm? Can you?
No.
One way that I think we can address, and I do believe that, I'm glad you did call it out, Michael, that our children are suffering from an emotional, social perspective, experiencing a ton of depression and anxiety. And I feel like if one major reason for that is that we're asking our children to remain in masks for many, many hours per day. I think you're all struggling to see me right now and see my facial expressions. And as children, they learn very much by facial expression. And I think it is the most disastrous thing we can do to our children is keep them in masks all day for eight hours per day. And I understand there are mask breaks. However, this is a really critically important time for them developmentally, socially, emotionally. And if we really want to enhance that in the schools, we would take off the masks and we would allow the children to breathe and to see facial expressions. I believe there should be choice, and it should be up to the parents to determine if their children should be wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. There are many parents who have said to me, children of parents of children that have special needs, that their children are really struggling. And it's only enhancing their anxiety, and they're having a very hard time with these children, not to mention high school kids. I think there's a lot of social pressure. I have two in high school, and I think some of you have children in high school as well. There's a lot of social pressure and around the mask wearing as well. So I think we really need to address that for the district and make the best decisions for our children. Secondly, while we talk about curriculum, absolutely parents need to have a voice in what is being taught in schools. We need to ensure that our curriculum is transparent to our parents in advance. During the summer is a great time for parents to review curriculum for the next next coming year. If we're going to be in years past, whenever we would change a math program, if we were going away from the current math program and going to initiate a new one, they would actually call a meeting and introduce the new math program to the parents first. So we had line of sight of what these new programs were going to be ahead of time. So that's where we need as 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 parents and as taxpayers, we owe it to our community to be transparent with our curriculum. That's number one. Inconsistencies are definitely an issue.
Ms. Galetta, I'm going to have to interrupt you because we're getting a quite a large disparity between the time. And so
Can I respond though? Because there's a difference of opinion. I think it's important because because the voters, obviously, right, the way the election works, we're not actually running against the Democrats. The voters have to choose which of the two out of the three Republicans. So that's a, it's good that we have the this back and forth. They, I mean, there's no secret that that Megan and I disagree, disagree on masks. I don't, I don't like masks. They, I look forward to the day when my students, my kids don't have to wear masks to school. That day hasn't come yet. But let's talk about curriculum. Because when we talk about curriculum, we're really talking about, there are really three curriculum that we have to remember here. They, there's the written curriculum, and that's what everybody's talking about. What has to be posted on the on on the website needs to be transparent. Then there's the taught curriculum, and there's a difference there. Because there's often a discrepancy between what's written in the plan, what actually ends up being taught. This plan's changed, things happen in the classroom, it's an organic system. And then there's the assessed curriculum, the learned curriculum, what kids actually learn, which often, there's always, there's often a difference, obviously, between what's taught and what's learned. We need to look systemically at all, all three of those. They, I would argue that the really serious incidents that happened last year, and when there's multiple incidents, I think it's a pattern. They, I think that speaks to systemic challenges both in the written curriculum, which is, which Cody's spot on, really, is I'm talking correctly about. But also in the taught curriculum, and that's where we have to talk about our observation system. Greenwich's observation system, you know, teacher observation system, I'm actually surprised at how behind the times it is. If you're a tenured teacher, you only need to be observed once over the course of the year. You could be observed more, you only have to be observed once, that's one lesson out of 180 days, you know, five lessons a year. They, you don't have that kind of feedback that really teachers need. And I think that's where you kind of see that breakdown and systemically in that. And then assessed curriculum, obviously, is where we talk about student achievement numbers we've already mentioned.
Okay, yes, Ms. Stowe, would you like to speak?
Yes, just so I can help get our time up. But a couple of things that I feel like I need to respond to. First of all, just we comply with state standards as it relates to curriculum. And I think that we need to do a better job, and we have been doing a better job. We also, Tony, who I am, of course, led the superintendent search for and hired, has brought in a great team of new coordinators that are really doing a wonderful job, trying to push out more curriculum as a tool for the teachers. But, Michael, you hit on a really good point, and, you know, you started, I know you're an educator. I don't want my teacher to be a robot either. I want them to still have a personality because that's how that's how kids learn, they get excited. And I know my children, I just got a great email tonight on this one paragraph that my daughter is running, writing in fourth grade. There is such great things happening from these teachers when they're provided with the right tools. And I have to say it on masks. I mean, it's not our call, first of all, we're under an executive order, given the health situation. No one enjoys it. That's for sure, but it is what it is. But what they do enjoy is being back in school in person. And by the way, our board got that done last year when others did not. And that was because we followed the safety and the guidelines, and I'm proud of what we accomplished on that front.
Ms. Costin, would you like to add something?
I would just like to say one thing. I don't believe parents are supposed to be the guideposts of our curriculum. You know, we can all have opinions as parents. We can, you know, express them in our to our children. But, you know, this is not a system where all citizens get to make the laws. And we have, we pay our teachers to educate our children. And I think that we have to be good passengers, but not the drivers in this process.
Okay, I'm going to go on to the next question.
Can I rebut?
Well, we're, because we have this time discrepancy, I think we're going to move on to
It's an important topic, though. I think it's critically important to families and the community.
It is an important topic. You know, I just want to warn you that what will happen is that the Democrats will have most of the time at the end if we do not change up a little bit and give them more opportunity to respond to other things. So, you know, I will, I will defer to the top time factor at this point. So the next question is, the district has fairly large percentage of students who qualify for subsidized lunches and who underperform the general student population on standardized tests. This achievement gap widened during Covid. What do you think the district should be doing to address this achievement gap? And Mr. Kittle, you are next.
Yeah, so it's actually, I I Mike mentioned it earlier, but the the performance data came out recently. I think it's going to be discussed at the Thursday Board of Education meeting. But I was reviewing the numbers this morning, and they're they're stark. If you look at the Title I, which is the subsidized lunch students, Title I math performance in in 2021, math proficiency at fifth grade was 29%. That's, that's a scary number. You think, you know, I think it's easy for people to say, oh, what can we do if it's low socioeconomic status? But I think that's really irresponsible. It's, I think you can look to history. I was talking about a school with a friend recently, Dunbar High School is the first black high school in Washington, D.C. It was set up in 1890. They had better performance as a school, underfunded, facing with with a very high percentage of students, children of unskilled laborers facing Jim Crow South laws and segregation. And they had the best performance of any high school in the Washington, D.C. district. So the idea that Greenwich, as wealthy of a town as we are, would have a proficiency level at that level, I think, is really shocking. By the way, it's not so great with the non Title I level either. I'm just picking fifth grade math, but it's, you know, across the board, it it it's not materially different. The fifth grade math, non Title I students, is 69%. This actually, I think, ties back to what we were talking about earlier with S E L. I think when you view, there's a lot of issues around S E L. But if you just think about character building and and being able to provide some of the certain lessons that I think actually some of the charter schools do an excellent job of, grit, work ethic, being able to delay gratification. That combined with great teachers, it should, you know, those are the kind of things that we need to help bridge the gap. But I I think that this is, this is the kind of, this is part of the reason why I want to be on the Board of Education. Because I think that it's 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 not acceptable. It's not something that we can say, you know, make excuses for. It really needs to be changed. And I think, you know, I hope that that's something we can we can positively impact.
Yes, Mrs. Costin.
Yeah, so, um, yes, our test scores have suffered, but I am encouraged for, you know, the following reason. And we have a lot of Covid relief money coming toward us. And it is focused specifically on combating learning loss and getting our test scores up. And I and I mean, millions of dollars coming to our town. Last year was the first time that we had math interventionists in every school. And and I will tell you, it is, it was hard, you know, for some families to even get their child in front of a math interventionist because the need was so great. So, you know, there are resources now at our disposal, you know, particularly with funds for English teachers, tutors, social workers. There's staff development funds that are available for us. And this year could be a game changer for really helping those students who, you know, during during the shutdown, when we didn't really have live learning and curriculum advancement at all for a lot of our students. I know for ours, my third grader, you know, would get a worksheet to do, but that wasn't really, you know, advancing her curriculum or her knowledge. So I think that we're making up for that now. And with all of the Covid funds that we'll be getting to focus on, you know, skills recovery and and, you know, just all of these challenges that have probably contributed to a significant loss in our test score. So I I think that there is a reason to be encouraged because there are resources now for us where we didn't have them before.
Ms. Stowe, would you like to add anything? We we're getting, we need to make up this discrepancy in time, so would
Oh, I'm happy to talk for a while about this. But so it's it's disheartening, and there's no doubt about that. I know we're going to be digging in to it more on Thursday night. Obviously, that's just been posted in board docs. But I'm going to follow a little bit too with Laura. We are at a real, we have a really nice opportunity here. We are at a real, we have a really nice opportunity here and, um, I'm actually Chair of the Budget Committee. So, uh, I've been spending a lot of the time learning more about the funds that we're getting from the American Rescue Plan. And this is, we have a real opportunity here to address this specifically because we're getting funding of approximately 9.6 million. And I'd like to point out that we are getting so much as a district for two reasons. One, we get more than other districts like New Canaan and places like that because of the fact that we have Title I schools. But also because of the fact that we were open when others were not. And we didn't even realize that, that wasn't an incentive, that was something that was done later. But I think that that's just, that shows a lot about what we accomplished and we've been rewarded for it financially. And I'm pretty excited about that. At least 20%, so basically 2 million, must be spent to address learning loss, and I'm reading this, among students, including low income students, children with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness and children and youth in foster care. The remaining 80%, so 7.7 million, must be invested on transformative areas. So this cannot be, this is additional funding. We have basically three years to spend it. And, um, I know that Dr. Jones and the administration has sent out a bunch of surveys, there's been some town halls, but we will still very much be a part of the discussion on how these funds are used over the next three years. Separately, the town is receiving 32 million, they can use that however they wish. And I think we should be advocating for much of that to be used for capital. That's all I'm going to say for now, thank you.
Okay, uh, Dr. Bakati Anthony, you're next.
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, a lot of it said, and Cody's right to point out, um, the real stark differences, the, um, the socioeconomic gap, which is not new. And you got to exclude Karen Kowalski, who's been pointing out this on, on the board for years. They, we've had a historic socioeconomic achievement gap, um, in town. And now we do have this, this opportunity. We have to be very mindful of not treating this opportunity, you know, that this funding that comes in as a one stop, hey, let's try to fix this, you know, who's the kids, these particular kids, and then move on the business as usual. This is as usual, wasn't Greenwich standards before. They, historically, our third graders reading, are reading, uh, you know, about 75% are proficient on the third grade test. Nationally, you have districts like Philadelphia and New York City and everybody else where the goal is every student reading on grade level at third grade. This third grade is such a pivotal year, it's where students switch from learning to read, to reading and learn. Why wouldn't that be our standard? Let's take this money and really set some stretch goals, all third graders on grade level. Why isn't every student in our high school taking advanced placement classes? They should, they, um, New York City has a, has, has a program AP for all. The goal of New York City is for every New York City high school student to take an advanced placement course. Why wouldn't we do that in Greenwich? They, uh, with all the resources we have at our disposal, they, um, we need to think large with this. They, um, this isn't a matter of spending more money and adding to the tax levy. It's a matter, it's a matter of taking the resources we have and this new largest and really thinking about how we can leverage the real changes that we've had in learning science over the last 15 years. But no one learned in teacher's school because they didn't exist then. Really leveraging that in our professional development programs, really leveraging technology, really having clear benchmarks, smart goals, really support all students learning at high level.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doe or Ms. Costin, do you have anything you want to respond to that?
So, um, just one thing, cause there was a question, um, in the speed round about preschool. And do I support, you know, do we support preschool for all? Ideally, yes. Um, is it possible here? I don't know, um, but in our Title I schools, I do believe it, you know, we should be able to have preschool classrooms in our Title I schools. Um, I know part of the specs for Julian Curtis were preschool classrooms. And we had hundreds of people apply for 59 spots last year in our preschool. Those are paying families who took their money elsewhere, 143 of them. We could have put, we could have filled nine classrooms with those students. And the reason I bring it up is because, um, what becomes an achievement gap often become, often stems from a preparedness gap, a school readiness gap. And particularly that is glaring, um, in some of our Title I schools where we don't have universal pre-K. Or even enough pre-K, that's all.
Ms. Doe?
Sure, I'll just add to that since Laura brought that up. I mean, cause I actually had said no to that. And the reason I said that, that's one of those questions you'd like to explain a little bit more, is that preschool is costly. And so I just can't say yes without giving it a more complicated response. However, I voted for the JC specs with the fact that there was room for preschools. Because I'm not sure that we need to make it universal, although of course, that is something that's being considered at a federal level. And so if that's the case, I do think our buildings need to be ready for it. But I'm just not sure it's something, as we talk about sort of the financial issues we have, look, I mean, it's hard for us to get money on our, our, our plan, I don't know if you guys are aware of this. And, you know, it was, it's been a tough couple of years. And so I want to make sure that we're serving our K through 12 really well. And then that has to be sort of something we consider in the toolbox, if you will, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Galena?
So before we, I think, I feel before we can, um, initiate APs for all and model what, you know, perhaps New York City is doing, I think what we really need to identify is where the gaps exist in, in the children. You mentioned, you know, the, the, the body of, of students that are suffering at this time. But just to point out, my son, who was in eighth grade when, when COVID started, had not had, and this would be for all kids, say, who were sophomores at this point. They did not have midterms or finals that year and nor did they have them last year. So while we want to say that we're very pleased and pat ourselves on the back that we had kids in school, the high schoolers really were only in seat two days a week, um, just to call that out. And they were home three days a week last year. They did not have midterms and finals, at least my son in, as a freshman, um, during that time, they did not have assessments. So that will cost us, um, we're, we're going to have to make up that deficit. What I'm hoping is that, um, with this COVID funding, um, it seems like it's flipped where we're only spending the 20% on learning, um, and then 80% will be on transformative areas. I would love to see more of that or maybe flip flop that because the kids at every level, there's, that we need to make up for some lost learning and we need to identify what that is and then provide the resources. Second, and lastly, Stanford has dropped their APs and ALP advanced programs. And I can just tell you, they're on the heels and they'd probably, really, we have to protect those in our own communities. And I think a lot of people are unaware that it could happen here in Greenwich as well. Hartford trying to remove those types of leveling in classes and take away, those opportunities for kids, which I think would be catastrophic for our community. Thank you.
All right, Carol, can I add just something for two seconds? The, the, just the idea-
We have a, quite a discrepancy here.
We have three candidates also, and they have two, so maybe that's part of it. But, um, the, uh, the, uh, I, I, I am very hesitant about the idea that more spending will solve our problems. I think you have to pause and say, uh, if spending is the answer, why is it that as the, you know, best funded school district in the state, that we have the gaps that we have? Why is it that even though we increase spending every year, we actually see declining results in a lot of these areas? The Title I students, third grade, we've seen more than a 10-point drop from 2016 to 2019 in math proficiency. And so I just, I think it's, yeah, but I think it's really important to say that if you want good governance, you can't have people that say, hey, more money's coming, that will solve it. And by the way, what happens is when it doesn't solve it, the only thing they ask for is more money. And I think that's why it's so important to have a board that is focused on, uh, evaluating outcomes and being very rigorous in its analysis, otherwise this will be the never-
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Doe, yes?
Sure, cause I have to get our time off, but Cody's right, I mean, there's two of us. But I've been known to be verbose, so I don't know what's going on. So, oh, first of all, I'm happy you brought that up.
It's met your match, Kathy.
It's been, uh, on, it's on for Thursday. You could go back to prior boards, this is a program that I've been hugely supportive of and we have a very supportive board on this. And it's always been the case in Connecticut that you simply have to identify gifted and talented students, but not do anything with it. And Greenwich has always been, um, really distinguishable on that front and I don't think you'll see anything changing on that. As for the APs, um, some, I think we're at 2,600 exams that were administered during COVID. It is constantly growing and somehow we are pushing more and more children to take AP exams. And the average has at least stayed the same to going slightly up in certain categories. So I'm really impressed with that, we are at the point where we're teaching kids BC calculus and they're running out of room. So, um, there are a lot of wonderful things that I wanted to put on that front. And then on, on the money front, I have to get back to that just for a second. Absolutely, money's not always the answer, but it's a problem when we don't have it. And one of the things that I just need to point out is that the average budget in the last 10 prior years was 2.02%. The last five was 1.79%, the increases, I should say, sorry, year to year. And the last three, it was one and a half. 90% of our costs are fixed. They are going up at more than 2% a year, it gets hard, okay? So we keep trying to find efficiencies, like I mentioned, Havemeyer, we've cut out more than a million dollars just since I've been on the board by reducing a coordinator, by taking an HR position and eliminating it, by reducing, um, administrative assistance, by redeploying coaches to be math interventionists. There has been so much creative ways, now we're focusing on energy cost savings. Um, bus utilization, we're doing everything this board, and I have to tell you, I, and I give credit to our new CFO and Dr. Jones, who are really working hard to always find efficiencies. But, um, it, it's, it's hard when, you know, 90% of your costs are fixed.
I have been asked to go to the one last question. And, uh, this will be, uh, the question and we will start, uh, this is Costin, you will respond first. When we consider the many school buildings in need of renovation or replacement, how would you prioritize the various required long-term infrastructure projects? And because we just have a few minutes, uh, I would ask you to, to answer fairly quickly, so.
So, uh, this is obviously a hot topic in our town, because right now we have crack monitors on the walls of our central middle school, to monitor how, how it might be, um, actually doing, and it's not doing well. So the one, um, blueprint we have, the facilities master plan was completed three years ago. And, um, we haven't made any measurable progress, um, because when one project is delayed, all the other ones in the queue are delayed as well. I happen to believe in our facilities master plan, but I also believe it is a living, breathing, you know, document. Will, will Central need to, um, move up in the queue? Will it have to be done simultaneously with Julian Curtis so we can still move our ADA, security, HVAC, all of those improvements we want to see, um, at our three media schools, which are Julian Curtis Riverside and Old Greenwich and now Central? So I really believe, um, you know, we need to make the, our capital, um, a priority. Because if we don't start, um, really addressing it, uh, you know, we're going to be in some serious trouble and not just, you know, structurally, this is a huge liability for us. If we were, if we were to be sued, I don't know what our, our liability would be. Really ADA is just good safety, we should not be carrying children up the stairs at Old Greenwich School when they're on crutches. So, um, we really knew, do need to address this issue and, and address it as quickly as possible because the wheels of progress grind so slow. You know, we had specs for JC that were not funded, um, by the BET. And so now we will set back another year. So I would really like to see, um, some progress in this area myself.
Okay, Ms. Doe, um, since we are still, uh, low on time for the Democrats, uh, I will give you time to say some more things.
Sure, sounds great, thank you. Um, just to remind everyone, I think everyone, like Laura says, knows at this point, uh, a study was commissioned by the BET a few years ago. It was simply a framework on how to preserve our assets. Million square feet, about a billion dollar asset value, and the average age in our buildings is 1953. OG Riverside and Julian Curtis rose to the top based on three things that we use for prioritization, right? ADA, air quality, safety and security. We're frankly about three years behind. We keep using the word kick the can down the road, but it is like, I can't see the can anymore. We're three years behind, this does not go away. We have to stop critically underfunding our master facility and maintenance. So maintenance, if you look at it, it's really supposed to be about 2% to 5% of the asset value. I'd be happy to get 20 million, okay? But we have never really been north of until the last year, 10, okay? We went to 12 last year, this needs to inch up. Otherwise, we're going to have more North Miami situations. We need to focus on maintenance and it doesn't help when the capital budget keeps getting cut. But to end on a positive note, this is where I'd like to see some of the funding that 32 million again, going to the town, they have more time to spend it, uh, be used on some of the capital needs that we have for our school district. Thank you.
Carol, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. It's time for us to go into our closing statements and as we mentioned, it will be-
Carol, the, it's, uh, it's really important, I think that, um, the three of us get to change the way and all these, it's, it is the-
We, we don't have the time for it. And so since we have this cumulative format where it's, we're trying to keep a balance between the parties, uh, we're, and at the time-
What if, what if we each just, uh, promised to limit our, our, our remarks to a minute here? It's so crucial for the town.
I think what you could do is add into your purse, your closing statement, something that you would like to, that you think is important to impart before the end of this. Otherwise, we need to, uh, I'm sorry, but this is the rules that we had set for, set for us, uh, at the start. So we need to proceed. And, um, so we are going in reverse alphabetical order and we are starting, uh, with Ms. Doe, your closing statement.
All right, thank you so much, um, for making this happen tonight. Uh, this has been a really fun discussion, just to introduce myself, since I kind of didn't do it at the beginning, I'm Kathleen Stone, currently Vice Chair of the Board of Education, I'm Chair of the Budget Committee, former Chair of the Policy Committee. My husband and I moved to Greenwich, uh, a decade ago for the wonderful schools, the great sense of community, the low taxes, and the fact that admittedly, we were in the middle of four grandparents, two of them who are watching my children as I speak. We have three, three children, one each in elementary, middle, and now high school. I immediately invested in the community from coaching T-ball to graduating softball and baseball. I became, I got on the board of our local neighborhood association and became a class parent multiple times. I decided to run for the Board of Ed four years ago, since I felt it was important for those of us who benefit from the system to help support it. I was impressed with our school system, but also appreciated they could always improve and that the challenge is to often balance the needs of the students with the financial realities we face. My financial acumen has certainly been helpful in this past term and I expect it will be in the next. In the past few years, we've been thrown a few curveballs. Early in my term, our superintendent left and I was asked to then lead the search, given my history recruiting CEOs in private equity. I ran the process, we found Dr. Jones, and I can proudly say we recently renewed her contract for another three years. Then we had COVID. I believe my ability to listen, engage with the community, listen to experts, and then to remain calm and agile came through. We worked all summer, the past two summers in fact, which I thought was when we had time off, turned out to return our kids in person, learning when others could not. It was not easy, but it was important. There are many things that drive a community, but I think during COVID, we've all come to realize even more how essential good schools are. And I believe it's something that we need to always focus on. As I reflected on my past four years, I realized I have never once missed a meeting, including those extra summer meetings. I take this job very seriously and I look forward to continuing to advocate for our students and community for another term. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Merkant, Kenty Anthony, you're next.
Okay, so let me say this about, uh, capital as part of my closing statement, because I think- because I think it's, it's, it's so important. And what we see here, we definitely see a broad emerging consensus. You saw the BET pass bipartisan guidelines last night. We saw Fred Camillo talking about it, the, should he be reelected? And you really see a lot of talk in town around the necessity of this. I think what you need to remember here, and that's why, like what Laura said about it being a living document, what you need to remember here is the master plan being a living document. When we talk about the Board of Education talking about Ed specs, you need to make sure that the board, the Board of Ed couches that in what's grounded in educational research and educational science. You have Board of Education members, but don't talk to BET members. They, I think that was part of the logjam here, even members of the same party. They, now I work, my day job as a, is a director of continuous improvement for New York City Public Schools. That means it's all about systems. As you know, I have a doctorate in education. But what concerns me so much is that when we come back here to Greenwich, we see so many of the same issues from my day job, despite the resources we have at our disposal. We see crumbling resources. We see lagging test scores. We see special education, which is criminal, but we didn't talk about special education this evening. We see special education and professional development programs not keeping up with advancements in the field. This is Greenwich. We have the talent, we have the resources, we have the community spirit to do so much better. Let's make sure, let's have, like I said, let's have all third graders reading at grade level. Let's have all high school students being eligible for and able to take AP classes. Let's have special education programs that are national models. They, let's be, let's be as, as a district, let's make sure we're doing everything we can for all of our students. I don't pretend that I have all the answers.
Anthony, I'm sorry, your time is up for your-
Let me just say that I will, I promise, I'll work my darndest, but the kids first.
Okay. Mrs. Costin, you're next.
All right, I had to unmute. I want to thank PTA Council, the League and the Greenwich Alliance for hosting this debate, as well as all the participants who are here. I didn't really get the chance, along with everybody else, to introduce myself ahead of time. So I just want to say that I have four children in the Greenwich Public Schools. My involvement in our schools began a decade ago as a parent at Glenville Elementary School. At that time, I had a schedule that allowed me to volunteer, so I volunteered in seven of our classrooms. After we moved to mid-country, we became a North Street School family. In 2019, I was unanimously elected to serve on the PTA Board at North Street. I'm also currently serving my second term on the RTM, which is the Representative Town Meeting, our local legislative body. And I've been through two municipal budget cycles now. I pride myself on always reaching out to BET members when I have a question. They'll vouch that I do reach out. Our meetings are long and often time-consuming, but it is really a privilege to serve in this role. And I really look forward to serving our students and families as a member of the board. I have been vocal about things like ADA and facilities and special education reform, which is not an area we got to touch on very much. But I would just like to state for anybody listening tonight, our special education system in Greenwich has not operated historically in a transparent manner. It has been slow to respond to parents' concerns. It has been lacking in consistency with identifying children and providing services to those most in need. So it does have systemic problems. And Michael is right, we, we didn't have time to touch on it and it's criminal, it seems. But it is my sincerest hope that as a member of the board, that we will work as partners and work together with the superintendent to help all children in this district achieve and excel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Kittle, you are next.
Yes, thank you. Well, just a few quick points that we didn't get to cover with the time. The town gets, the last 10 years, 99.8% of the operating budget has been granted by the BET. The BET has done a fantastic job making sure the schools are funded. We don't really have a funding problem in the schools. I think we have a governance problem. On the efficiency of how it's run, 1980, the same number of students in the school system as today, 500 administrators. Today, there's a thousand. There's a lot of opportunity for better governance. I think in, on the master plan, I, I said no in the short segment, I think is a very obvious reason why. The master plan identified Central as structurally deficient, and yet it deals with it in year 12. I don't know how you can have our middle school have structural issues, especially in a year where we had a roof collapse in one of our schools and push that so far out. So those are just quick points I wanted to cover. For the closing statement, you know, I just want to thank League of Women Voters, thank the other candidates, and thank everyone watching, obviously the kind of people that tune into something like this on a Tuesday at seven, when something like Squid Game is available on Netflix are the kind of people that make this town great because it's parents that care really make a difference. Schools in Greenwich are really important to me. I'm a product of the public schools here. My parents moved here and raised me here because of them. I have a two-year-old daughter. My wife and I hope to have more. And so I think that probably puts me with having the, the, the many decades of exposure to the Greenwich Public Schools. And, you know, that's my reason for wanting to do this. I, I, I had a great experience in the schools and I have concerns over, you know, some directions that we've gone. And so I wanted to step up and offer my services to work tirelessly on the board to improve it. I think my professional background serves me well here. So after the high school, I went to Northwestern. I was a math major, graduated in three years. I started a career in investment banking, worked for a private equity firm. And then for the last seven years, I've worked for a large investment firm. I have, I think of all the candidates, the most experienced, the most experienced serving on corporate boards and the most governance experience and analytics experience.
Kittle, I'm sorry, your time, your time is up.
I hope to bring that to the board. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Galetta, it's your turn.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, our hosts this evening, and all of our community members that joined tonight. I, we really do appreciate all of that. So just to answer and sum up tonight, why me? I know what it is to raise children in Greenwich. I'm a mother of four children raging in the ages of 15 to 24, who have all been educated in Greenwich schools. Parents want the best for their kids and to help them pursue their personal interests, whether they be academic, artistic, athletic, and to the best of their ability. Our schools have provided that for my kids and we need to be sure the same system is there for the next generation of kids in our community. And that's why I feel so deeply passionate about this. I know what it is to be a community volunteer. My husband and I have long been dedicated community volunteers. We started a grassroots girls' travel basketball and AAU program out of the Boys and Girls Club. We've coached many, many kids in this community, GBA as well, and in traveling AAU program. One highlight of this experience is watching the girls develop excellent skills while really building lasting friendships. Additionally, while we were volunteers, we were also awarded with the Volunteer of the Year at the Boys and Girls Club. So that was a thrill and an honor. I know what it is to be a working mom. I've been in information technology for more than 25 years and currently serve as Vice President of Strategic Alliances for a fast-growing tech company. The success of my industry is based, is, depends on the collaboration and hard work of a diverse group of people committed to shared goals and measurable performance. So I strongly believe that these skills will seamlessly translate into working across the members of the board and across the town, our town constituents and leaders as we seek academic excellence and opportunities within Greenwich schools. Finally, on the infrastructure, as I didn't get to weigh in, I do support the master plan. I do believe in executing on the recommendations set forth. And I think it's something that we need to address ADA compliance, absolutely failing infrastructure, unsafe environments completely. So thank you again.
Thank you. So it is time to draw this to a close. I want to give special thanks to all the candidates who participated, shared their thoughts. And now it will be up to you, the voters, to determine who you would like to choose. We have, for more information on candidates, you can go to L W V Greenwich.org for the 2021 Voters Guide. Election Day, as I said, is Tuesday, November 2nd. Please be sure you vote on the important government, local government positions before you because they do impact your lives and the lives of your families. I want to say thank you very much and good evening to all.
And before, before we end, just one correction before we end. I incorrectly said that the Chairman of the BOE has, yes, everybody quickly and graciously corrected me. I misspoke. They do not have that voting, sorry, they do not have the right to. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, that would be a tiebreak.
You guys are right.
Just one vote.
You're correcting me. Good luck to everybody. Thank you to our candidates for running.
Thank you so much.
It is very important that we, that people run for office no matter what. And it's important that we are able to discuss our differences civilly. And today was an example of that. Thank you to Carol for moderating and thank you to the League of Women Voters, all the volunteers who helped put this together, particularly Becky Gillen, who runs our voter services group, and to PTAC and to the Greenwich Alliance, Educational Alliance. Thank you also for supporting this debate and being partners. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Megan, bye-bye. Have a good one. Good night.